Meeting of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission. And again, I'll begin with a few introductory comments. The Planning Commission will first take action on the consent agenda. The following action on the consent agenda, the County Planning Commission will continue with the regular agenda items. And again, as a courtesy, please make sure that you've got your cell phone silenced and turned off. Any final action taken on conditional use permit requests will affect five working days in five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal to the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by August 3rd, 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission for a hearing on August 18th at or after 9:15 a.m. Any final actions taken on rezoning applications tonight will be referred to the County Commission for a public hearing on August 18th at or after 9:15 a.m. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider items on the consent agenda. The minutes from the June 22nd meeting are included as part of the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any of the items on the consent agenda? All right. Next, I'm going to read the consent agenda, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to have a move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, please raise your hand, and we'll move it to the regular agenda, and we'll go through our normal process here on that. Okay? So the first one is the approval of the minutes of the June 22nd meeting. Item number two is a conditional use permit 15-42 to allow a manufactured home, and that location is at 25649 472nd Avenue, and that's approximately 1.5 miles east of Crooks. Item number three is a conditional use permit 15-43 to amend CUP 13-33. They're requesting 3,738 square feet of, on the, that's a, of a building on, property located at 48160 259th Street, approximately 1 mile north of Brandon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This one and the next one are next door neighbors, and I, I mean, they're the same applicant.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if we should move that to the regular agenda.
Okay.
I mean, those two, because they're apparently side-by-side properties, side-by-side projects.
Okay, so you want to move that one?
Three and four.
Yep. Three and four. All right, so we're moving three and four to the regular agenda. Item number five is a conditional use permit, that's number 15-45, to transfer one building eligibility on property located approximately 2 miles northwest of Humboldt. Item number six is conditional use permit 15-47 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building. They're requesting 1,920 square feet on property located at 26134 462nd Avenue, approximately 1 mile southwest of property. Item number seven is a conditional use permit 15-48 to allow Class II major home occupation. This is located on, property at 25224 475th Avenue, approximately 2 miles southeast of Item number seven is a conditional use permit 15-49 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building, and they're requesting 4,269. This is on property located at 46238 467th Avenue, and that's approximately 6 miles west of Sioux Falls. Is there anyone here that wants that moved to the regular agenda?
No.
A gentleman in the back to the regular agenda?
No.
Yeah, there's another one in the back.
I think there are a couple that just like to talk a lot briefly.
All right, that's not a problem. So we'll move number eight. Item number nine is a rezoning 15-05 to rezone the property legally described, excuse me, the property, I don't want to go through the legal description. It's approximately 3 miles west of Sioux Falls, unless somebody wants me to put through, put me through that. Any concerns with that one? The recommendation is to deny. Are you the applicants?
We are, yeah. We were told that it was going to be moved to the regular agenda.
Okay. If you want to move to the regular agenda, then we can do that. And item number 10 is a conditional use permit 15-50 to amend CUP 91-2 to allow a 27 by 68 mobile home on property at 25868 Skunk Creek Avenue, and that's approximately 1.5 miles northeast of Hartford. Okay, just stay on the consent agenda. All right. So if I'm correct here, the items on the consent agenda are the approval of the minutes, item number two, item number five, six, seven, and 10. Staff hasn't fixed me up, so I must be right. Okay?
Second, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, and the consent agenda is approved. So if you were here for one of those items, you're free to go, because your item has been approved for the staff's recommendation. Put your hand around if you'd like. Okay. Item number three, and I should say that our, the way we do the regular agenda is that we have staff come up, give a presentation, then we're going to call on the applicant to come up and give a few comments, then we'll open it up to the floor, then we'll close the discussion. The Planning Commission will take action, make a motion, and we'll go from there. So, the first one, staff, is David, who, do you want to tell us about number three?
Good evening, David Heidell, Planning Department. Conditional use permit 15-43 is to amend an earlier conditional use permit 15-33. I can't remember what the size of that one, but he's requesting 3,738 square feet. So it's just a little over what the original request, request was. The petitioner has stated that he'd like to do some rearranging, taking down some building, removing some existing buildings and putting up indoor buildings that are Sioux Falls' So the subject property is located about a mile north of the city of Brandon, the city limits right there, Highway 11, right? So, requesting, so the petitioner is requesting to construct a 2,226 square foot accessory building for personal use. Skip forward right here to the building. So here's the property right here, it's an existing building. This is where the proposed building would go, on that property, the 2,226 square foot building. Right now, the petitioner has an existing 27 and a, 27 and a half foot by 54 foot accessory building, which relocated right here, as I mentioned, northwest of the residence on the lot. Currently, the petitioner has 5,672 square feet of total accessory building area on the, the lot adjacent to this, which is the one to the south, which is a separate request as well, on the property 48164 259th Street. In the general area, the total accessory building sizes range from about 1,500 square feet, is located, to the south, and then to the, to the west is a 4,000 square foot building, and then, as you move to the east, there's kind of like more of a business or, agricultural, business oriented use, about 10,000 square feet. So there's a grouping of buildings on those lots, which is located about a quarter mile to the east of the subject property. On July 15th, staff visited the property and determined that the proposed building site generally conforms to what the existing accessory building sizes are in the area. Took a couple pictures of the site. This is looking towards where that proposed building would be on that lot, and this is the same picture right there. This is one of the buildings that was located to the west, the 4,000 square foot, just going to do what that looks like. And this one is located to the southeast of the subject property, 1,500 square feet. And then, oh, excuse me, this is the one that is southeast, so 1,500, so detached garage. So this is looking off another building in the distance, looking towards the elevator right there in Carson, some of the green. And then, this is the building that's 10,000 square feet, grouping of buildings, or business, agricultural, business oriented property. Just going through some of the criteria that the Planning Commission can use in determining conditional use permits. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the surrounding area for use is already permitted, and upon property values within the surrounding area. As I mentioned, there are two other properties within a half mile of the subject property that have more than the petitioner's requested total accessory building area. It is unlikely that the proposed building size will have a detrimental effect on property values in the immediate vicinity, since there are already other larger accessory buildings in the area, which is primarily agricultural with a few residential sites. It's not including the petitioner's farmstead property, but the subject property. Two, that the effect upon the normally, normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area, accessory building may only be used for personal residential and agricultural storage. No commercial business activities are allowed. Given the size of the other larger accessory buildings, a 3,738 square foot of total accessory building area would be congruent with the land composition. The util, three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Petitioners planning to have access off the existing driveway between the house and the location of the proposed building, and wouldn't need any further infrastructure beyond that. Four, that the off-street parking loading requirements are met. No off-street parking will need to be supplemented in this area as a result of personal agricultural and residential activities, and no commercial or business parking will be allowed at any time. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of, inclusive of light shines, so that nobody's will constitute a nuisance. No offensive nuisances shall be permitted at any time during the use of the proposed accessory structure. Use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property, prevent direct spillage of light off the site. Six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. Proposed accessory buildings should have minimal effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Use of the accessory building for private use and storage will create a few potential problems to neighboring properties. So recommendation, staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory buildings in the immediate vicinity. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 15-43 with the following conditions: One, that the accessory building area shall not exceed 3,738 square feet on the property; Two, that the building shall not exceed 35 feet in height; Three, that the building inspection is required to measure the outside dimensions of the building; Four, that building permit is required; Five, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot; Six, that only personal, agricultural, or residential storage shall be allowed in the building, and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed; Seven, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property's boundaries; And eight, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory buildings at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions and the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'm frustrated. Just a comment, David, I really don't like item in your stipulations, number seven, about the, cop and, and light that is shielded, that's something we haven't always done in the past, and I think it's a great idea, I'm doing these. So thank you for that. No other questions for the staff? Thank you, David. So petitioner here, would you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your project?
I'm Michelle Beener. I'm the wife of Kevin Beener. And our address is 48164 259th Street, Brandon, South Florida.
Okay. Mrs. Beener, you've heard the staff report, any comments about that, or?
Nothing, it all sounds good.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I guess my question is, you have two applications, this one and the next one.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I guess, why do you have two properties? Are we, are we putting them together to a, you know, put an airport hangar or something?
No, there's, there's, there's two lots there.
Yes.
Okay.
There are going to be two separate buildings.
Yeah.
One's going to be off to the side, and then we're taking down one building on the other.
There's a corn crib there, that, an old grain reefer we're taking down.
And so you're going to just use this for agriculture?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of items three and four.
Oh, three and four?
Yeah.
All right.
Same, same, basic project.
I have a second, man.
Got a, a motion and a second to approve both items three and four, with staff recommendations and stipulations. You sure? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and those items are approved. Thank you for coming in. And, gentlemen, say aye to item number eight. Scott, I think you've got this one.
Yeah. Just going to forward this off, and I'll be right there.
Yep, yes.
Okay, item number eight is a conditional use permit 15-49 to exceed the 1,200 square foot accessory building requirement that we have. The applicant is requesting 4,296 square feet. This is for property that's located about 6 miles west of Sioux Falls on 267th Street. The applicant is requesting to build a 42 by 80-foot structure, and the primary use of the structure will be as a stable and to ride two horses in, so like a riding arena. The applicant has provided a site plan, and I'll skip right to that site plan for you. So this is the site plan, and I'll show the pictures. The house, there's an existing house, which is here, and there's an existing triple-stall garage, which is here, and that garage is 936 square feet. It's a standard triple-stall garage. The, the 42 by 80-foot structure is going to be on the west side of the house, which, if I go back to the, so, the house sits in here, the riding arena building is going to be on the west side, and I'll go through the slides. I did go out to the property on July 6th, and it's a nice wooded parcel of land. You can see the house here. If you look carefully, sort of back in here, you'll see the garage. The applicant is proposing to build that riding arena over on the west side of the house, which is over here. There are several other large residences, or sorry, large accessory structures that are, that exceed that 1,200 square foot size, and I've provided a map for you. Most notably, there is a 4,000 square foot accessory structure right here, which is a large white building, and I have some pictures of that. And then subsequently, there's about 6,000 square feet of property that, of accessory structures that are located on this parcel, and it, which is an older farmstead, so that, you may want to take that into account. But, so, let me go through the pictures for you. Here you can see the, the house and the garage. This is part of, this is looking directly south at the parcel property that has the 6,000 square feet. Exact number, I believe, is 6,198. This is the parcel that's across, on Apple Lane, that's the closest property, that's the 4,000 square foot structure, and, I'll go back to that picture. As you know, there are several criteria that we look at when we evaluate conditional use permits. Is the use going, is the use appropriate to the area? Is it, it is, many of the structures out there have accessory buildings attached or on the same lot as the residence. The applicant submitted a site plan showing that there will be access, there's an existing driveway, there's existing water and sewer and utilities to the, to the single-family residence. The applicant does meet the parking requirements, has a triple-stall garage, which meets the requirements. And we also take into consideration, is there, is this use going to cause noise, odor, dust, vibrations, et cetera? And when we think about an accessory building, the, the actual location of the accessory building is not necessarily going to create any noise, dust. What the applicant may do inside might, and he can address that. I know that's one of the concerns that the neighbors are going to have. And then finally, is the conditional use permit, how is that going to affect health, safety, the general welfare of the public, and is it fit with the comprehensive plan? And in all of those situations, the, there should be no impact with the placement of an accessory structure. The intent of the comprehensive plan will be met, as it will retain the residential character of the area, and will allow for continued use of the property. Staff finds that the conditional use permit is appropriate for the area. There are several other l, oversized buildings within eyesight of this structure, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit 15-49 with seven conditions, which I'll read for the audience. Condition number one, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed of 4,296, which, that is the, the combination of the attack, of the detached triple-stall garage and the new proposed structure. Number two, the building shall only be used for the petitioner's own or personal residential use. No commercial or business use or storage shall be allowed. Number three, the accessory building shall not exceed one story in height. Number two, or four, the building, a building inspection is required to determine that the combined area of all accessory structures does not exceed 4,296 square feet, measured from the outside perimeters. Building permit is obtained. Number six, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. And number seven, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notices to the owner to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions and the Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I know the applicant's here as well.
Questions for Scott?
So Scott, just to be clear, while it's a residential area, the general area is zoned agricultural, right?
Yes, it is zoned agriculture, and you can sort of see here, there is what I would call sort of like an old rural subdivision that you can see here. This is Apple Lane, there's several houses, there's one, two, three, four, five lots on there. So, you know, within this area, there's probably 10 houses, 10, 12 houses, if you count this all up from here over to here.
Thank you. Anything else for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Is the applicant here? Could you come forward and state your name and address, tell us about your project?
Hi, my name is Michael Watt. The address is 46238 267th. We just purchased the property in those last couple of months, with the intention of having two horses. We currently live in Canton, we live right in town. It's always been our desire and hope to have two horses and, and have them on our property. We currently stall these horses just south of T with a farmer that we rent from, so obviously it would be a wonderful opportunity for us to have them on our property. The plan that we have for the building is a very simple building. It would have a 48 by 42 riding space, a 24 by 42 stall area, and small area for hay storage inside the building. This building would be enclosed. The horses are stalled at night, the horses are not on the pasture at night. I've had some contact through, through Scott sending me emails. I have a couple of neighbors that seem to be very concerned about manure removal, the horses being on the pasture and turning it into a dirt lot kind of situation, and kind of reducing their property value. I have tried to address these with returned emails, and hopefully I've been able to answer their questions. The two horses that we have are tremendously well cared for, they are like our children. It's very important to us, again, it's a dream for us to have this situation. We have purchased a, a trailer for manure removal. We've talked to the landfill down the road, and we can either weekly or bi-weekly remove all of the manure, both from the pasture and the stall area, and take it to the dump for a very minimal fee. We can, I even in email, address the concept that we would provide references of the care that we have for our horses to make sure that this has no impact on our neighbors. I mean, obviously, we are a new neighbor here, and we want to make sure that our neighbors are very happy and are comfortable with us being there. The, the building that we will do, we have an excavation team come, and that excavation team has looked at the property. It is eight inches higher in the back part of, so the north side of where the building will be, so it gently slopes to the south. All of my neighbors are to the north. So, you know, if there was any kind of situation or anything that would happen, it would go forward to the property and away from my neighbors. Obviously, it's an enclosed building. We will be using very high-quality footing inside the arena, so there will be no dust or any kind of situation with that. And again, we have a very comprehensive manure removal plan and a place to take it already established. The building itself will be very attractive, it will look very much like the home. Obviously, you saw, we have kind of a log-style home, which is very unique in the area. The building will be colored similarly, it won't be bright red, or orange, or green, or anything, so it, and it is also recessed into the trees, so it will be kind of shielded, protected, everything that I could think of to try to become a good neighbor to this situation. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak at the side? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. And, uh, just, thank you.
Carol Frome, 26689 Apple Lane. Did you receive the rebuttal that I wrote?
I forwarded your email to them.
Okay. Well, first off, I got something a few days ago, just a notice up here and a map. Nothing about horses, nothing about fences, nothing about drainage or anything. My neighbors had to go through the whole package for me and give it to me. And it states on here very clearly that this building is going to be to the east and the west. So, obviously, I'm confused about what's really going on. There is a drainage problem there. My house is here to the north, this is where they are, and then I have another neighbor over here. It slants down. So the drainage he's talking about is from the building. I don't have a problem with the building, if it had cars or machinery or whatever, like the rest of them do. The problem I have is the horses with the pasture, because obviously, there's going to be waste, and it goes, when there's a hard rain at all, thanks to a neighbor down the road, he built a very large culvert, the water comes and steps up against our small culvert, and I've got the pictures, if you want to see them, of what happens.
You can put them up on the Elmo there, and we actually can see everything on the screen that's raised.
There's a TV in front of you there.
That you can't see, but we can.
I don't know. So, I'll. And also, since this transaction has taken place, I've got pictures of heavy equipment driving, tracks driving across my property, not crazy about that either. But, I'm going to, that's the tracks across my property, which is my backyard. The first contact I had through an email with him was at 5:00 this afternoon, so, and I didn't get references or anything that he was talking about. Okay, that's my property, you can see it slants down, and it's what they call a dry creek. When there's any rain at all, that turns into a creek, goes through that small culvert. Even in the winter, you can see the problem we have with drainage, and that wasn't much of a melting point. The road is right there at the bottom, and the rest of it is the culvert, the... the, right down all of my property. His property line by the state is 11 feet from where my laundry line is. And you can see, well, let me show you. This is my house. It's 40 feet away from his property line. So I took pictures of a few years ago when we got heavy rain. That's what happens. This is, I took this in the morning after the rain. When I went out during the rain at 4:00 in the morning, it was all the way. You can see it going up into my walkout patio, and I have a quart of water in my basement. That's happened twice. And there's a few more pictures that the small culvert cannot handle, the amount of water coming down. This is the one. And like I said, it's happened twice. I've had to cart it down. This is, I took three trips to the dump, all trailers, things in my basement. This is the culvert that's right down the road that kind of hastens the problem. Water is bad enough. I can't imagine what it would be like with manure. And he said the drainage goes out to the ditch in front. That doesn't help me when I've got this pasture so close to my house. Aside from the smell, the waste will go down into that creek, which goes down, backs up against my culvert, and comes into my basement. So I can't imagine people deeming that livable with a basement full of water and manure. So I have a problem with the drainage, and I have a problem with the smell, because it's right next to my bedroom window.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. Chair, ma'am, is there anything that your new neighbor could do to make this easier to live with?
He could move his fence line away from my house, yes.
Commissioner, is there a chance I could answer that?
Of course. Just asking.
We'll get you back up after a bit.
Have a question.
Yep.
Okay, regarding your small culvert, I think that's on the Apple Lane, whatever it's called. Okay, so this is just, actually, the problem with development, which we've wanted quite often. And adequate drainage and developments, which are both developed cheaply and not adequately. And so all of a sudden, you get a bigger culvert upstream, and yeah, here it comes. And yours was never allowed for.
And actually, when I called the county about that big culvert going in, they said there's nothing they can do. And I said, but every time I get a rain, it floods my basement. What am I supposed to do?
You're supposed to get together with your other people in development and put out a bigger culvert.
It's not a county road.
Right.
That's right.
Right. But people can just put in culverts wherever they want to, and.
In the township, you need to handle it in the township. But if it's a private road, that's you and your neighbors.
But aside from that, it happened before that culvert, and this just makes it worse. So I get the flooding. Like I said, the water's bad enough. Insurance doesn't cover it. But to have all that animal waste and everything, aside from the smell, I can't open my windows anymore. I lived there for 16 years. And I enjoy being out in the country with some privacy, and I'm not seeing that happen anymore. Aside from opening the windows, getting fresh air, and a problem with my basement. I'll never put carpet in my basement again, thanks to this.
So if, if I was hearing you correctly, and I want to kind of paraphrase, I'm sure I was, you're really not so concerned about the building, it's the horses that are, when they're outside.
The drainage.
And they're droppings. Actually, having the horses inside for a portion of the time would actually improve probably the situation, because.
But you know, like the removal of waste, oh, like I said, I've already got these mystery tracks going through my yard. And you know, the notification was deceiving, and all these things that are going on, I'm not home all the time. I can't watch what's going on, so.
I think, and I shouldn't, you know, boy, I'd be risky to speak for staff, but the notification is about the zoning action, and the zoning manager, the conditional use action is to approve the building. You're in an agriculturally-zoned area. He could put horses there without the building. And you'd actually have a worse situation. And it would never have a hearing. So the notice is not about the host horses, because we're not saying yes or no to horses. We're saying yes or no to the building.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just wondering on the site map, if you would be able to show us where your house lies as compared to the proposed, the proposed building?
David, what about this one? Throw this on the elbow, maybe? It's got the property lines.
Okay, my house is right here, 40 feet away from my.
And in the corner that.
Yes, so closer to the garage and the pasture. It's right on top of the pasture.
Hopefully, I can help clarify.
We'll, we'll give you the floor here, just a moment.
There's where the building will be.
No, I got my.
There's where her house is. This area that you see, this large square here, is all just pasture.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at the side?
I'll keep it very fast until I allow me, Mr. Chair. I promise I'll talk fast. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Krausey. I'm a property owner directly to the, I'm supposed to be good at homeless, because I'm an attorney, I don't tell you what I'm doing. My home is right here, there, there we go, directly to the east.
On the west side of Apple or whatever it is?
Yes, sir, most certainly. Part of my underlying frustration, understand, is that the notification process, I understand what it's for, that's for the building. But even in that, and you're going to have to frigging my ignorance, and so I'm going to apologize to all of you for wasting your time on this, but the notification process, Cheryl said it seems a little deceptive. I don't know if it's that, it seems a little disingenuous, and that's not a total criticism, but maybe it's just my ignorance. But when you get a piece of paper that says we're going to have a hearing, and someone wants three and a half times, you know, all available accessory building square footage. We live, granted, we're zoned to A1, except for one lot. They're not outlandish, we're a residential somehow. It seems weird, and so it's on me to then figure out what the heck's going on. And that parts, it creates strife, I think. And I think it made this process more tedious for the actual applicants, tougher for Cheryl to line out, and tougher for some of the neighbors, because you get this notice that says we want this much of an application or this much of a, you know, square footage deviance. But you don't actually understand what they're going to use it for, what they're doing, and never see the actual staff report unless you call for it. Even when you get it, and that's part of why I'm here. I had to talk to Mike to figure this out. The staff report says that the things go into the east, which is directly between his house and my house, and that's impossible. So when I get here, obviously, it's going to the west, that's what the site plan says. But if I don't call and get both the staff report and the site plan, I have no idea that that's the case. So I guess my question, or criticism, if you will, and I mean that as loosely as I can, is it possible that these things, because I guarantee you Mike would have done this, can they be sending these things out with the notice, rather than just giving you a piece of paper? Because it'd be handy if we got more things, then we wouldn't just sit and fuck about. I don't think I would be here outside of the danger of saying to the rest soon. But Mike, a lot of my concerns would have been answered that way. But thankfully, Mike was able to come and find me. He had time between when he got sent out to the hearing. But not everyone was able to do that. I believe in that he tried. Not everybody could get together and chat about that. And it's kind of tough when you get this, and it says three and a half times, you know, the available square footage, and the paper you read about people putting up chicken hatcheries and, you know, hog confinement areas. And all of a sudden, we have a new neighbor who I genuinely think is probably a pretty nice guy. This is what we get, and it's very confusing. And I like to fancy myself quasi-intelligent, but I'm not all the time. So when I get stuff like that, you know, it's a little, I don't know, it's eyebrow-thing. And it seems odd and just a little bit tough to think that everyone who gets that has been understanding, well, if you call, they'll give you more information. I, for given, with my legal experience, I had no idea that if I called and get that. But I tried. Lucky I did. It's awesome. On the flooding side, and I understand your comments, Mr. Chair, that you are talking about building. I get that entirely. And after talking with Mike and talking about the excavation, learning that things will push forward to the south, that's great. There still is an issue with drainage in and back. And you asked a very pointed question. Is there anything that could be done? Sure. I mean, I think there's a lot of ways that you can mitigate what would naturally flow down through there. And I think that I'd be glad to help in that process, as my property suffers the same flooding, though it doesn't get all the way to my basement like Cheryl's. Cheryl's got the grudge of it, right? And Mr. Mike and his wife, I don't know your wife's name.
Mike, what?
Mike and Nikki. They walk into a situation that's essentially about as friendly as a pit of vipers with the neighbor that just left. And we have this drainage problem that was exacerbated by a neighbor that's less than, I don't know, thoughtful to the west. We all deal with it. And I understand all of your comments about, well, it's a private road. You'll figure out how to deal with it. Which was caused by someone else, not necessarily by them. And this whole notice process just exacerbated it.
True.
So I guess if you can help me understand, if there's a way, if there's, within the political process, if there's a way to change that to say, hey, why don't we give them the application petition, so that there's no questions?
Well, first of all, your comments are appreciated.
You're being very kind, Mr. Chair.
Presenting your concerns, and I think it's something that we should discuss with staff. You know, staff has put up the notice here. I suspect, and we've got an attorney here to keep us out of trouble, that a lot of the issues maybe with sending out information about what is being, what the person intends to do with the property, we're now speaking for him, instead of speaking about what the legal action essence is being taken in this specific application. So if we start presenting what the applicant wants, I think, I would guess that that's at dangerous ground. I am also not sure about the timing, and Scott, I don't know, maybe.
That's the other thing I was going to say. The hearing notice goes out before the staff reports are written. So it's impossible to include a staff report with the notice, because it hasn't been written yet.
It's not impossible to include the actual petition, though, I don't think. I think that's something that's available. That's how you generate the notice. And there's nothing under that subject to what you're going to use it for.
And again, I really appreciate your comments. We're not going to work through a process change in this particular hearing, but we will, we will take it under advisement, I guarantee you that.
Aye, sir.
All right? So you do have concerns about the flow of water. You didn't speak related to the building itself, or do you have concerns with the building?
I don't. I just think that when you read through the staff report, and this is tough, and again, it's, it's a tough job. I don't do it, and I don't want to do it. I'm glad that I don't have to, because I wouldn't be able to appease everyone. But ultimately, when you read through the staff report, you're talking about this is a residential area. You make a comparison to an agricultural area. Granted, it's zoned A1, and they compare it to a farm with this huge accessory building. There's literally only one accessory building within the residential area. And all the houses are cars and stuff. Literally, I think built like castles and trains and stuff. Again, things I don't understand. But at the end of the day, I don't have a problem with the building. I think it's a great idea. Your concern, or your point was very well made, that, hey, you could have up to 24 houses. You have 24 horses. Sitting in the back of this pasture doing whatever they want. They're going to find them for most of the time, which is great. Not most of the time, but maybe. And it sounds like they have a manure removal plan, which is fantastic. My concern is, and will remain until it happens the first time, I hope it doesn't, but in my line of work, it's my job to figure out what the responsible thing is that's going to happen and try to find a way to avoid it. And at some point, if there is an accumulation of manure and it does flood, it's going to go in Cheryl's backyard, sorry, in her basement, it's going to go in my backyard. So if there's a way to mitigate that, that'd be fantastic. It sounds like Mike's willing to work together with people to do that, which I think is great. I talked too much, I'm sorry, Mike. I really meant to just talk to you about the notice thing. But there are drainage concerns there, and they're not our fault. They're not Mike's either. But they ought to be considered. And when you read through that staff report, it mixes residential and then uses a farm comparison. And it's not going to affect drainage, it kind of is, but it's not. And the stated use of it, the staff report certainly does. It's not going to create offensive orders. Although the building's not, but you're talking about happy horses and they know. And that's important. So ultimately, it's a little confusing. It's not that I want to be a bad neighbor, that I want to be, you know, obstinate, but it's tough to digest all of it when it's presented kind of piece by piece. If that makes sense. So I'll stop talking.
Any questions? Anyone else from the audience that would like to come forward and speak at the side? Would the applicant like to come forward then, again?
Just for a second.
Maybe you've got some things you want to add after hearing your neighbors.
Which one do you want? Well, when we came out and looked at the property when we wanted to purchase it, I guess, I understand all of my neighbor's concerns. But I guess I just wanted to speak to the council in the fact that in, in this area, there are probably 40 cattle, at least 40 cattle. And when we came and looked at the property, here's my property, this space that's here and this space that's here had at least 50 cattle. Now, I realize it's zoned A1, and I realize that there are great concerns about manure. I think the very minimal concerns are coming from my two horses. And I would like to totally assure the council, and I will provide references, if you need them, to show that we are very, very involved horse owners and that we have a manure plan for this, and none of these concerns that they have will transpire. They very possibly will transpire from the 50 or 60 cattle that might be in the backyard. Unfortunately, that's not something I can address.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A question. So how many acres is this pasture? That's a pretty subtle question.
The pasture area that I'm fencing is probably three acres, roughly.
Okay, so that ends the discussion right there. You have one horse for one and a half acres. Is it okay with you, would you be objected if we limit this to two horses?
Absolutely not.
All right, that's all I need to know. I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What was on the pasture before you bought the property?
Grass.
Just grass, nothing? You may ever hay off of it or have cattle on it?
No. They used it for a hammock and a swing, and it's just backyard, you know? The area that is behind us, that Cheryl, Cheryl has back here and back in here is roughly 10 acres of land that has, is all pasture and grass. And no animals. I'd like to speak when he's done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So the, it's been brought up that somehow my, the staff report was misleading or not clear. And I just want to reiterate that, and this has been brought up, but the request was for a larger building. And my staff report was written in that manner, not, it has nothing to do with manure management or fly, I mean, this is not a mini KFO where we're, where I'm writing, because the applicant, six months from now, could decide, I'm tired of horses and get rid of them and use it for whatever. The building's still going to be there. So, and as you know, it is zoned A, and the applicant could, you know, have horses there already. So really, my staff report was addressing a larger building and the whole manure management and flies and whatnot. It never came into play, so I apologize for that. If you wanted a fuller, I mean, I did indicate that he was going to store, put horses in there. It was for a riding arena, so.
And later, we can discuss it some other time, whether we want to have the application go with the notice. That's for another time, Scott. So thank you for that. I didn't take an apology, it was necessary, frankly, so, thank you. Anyone else in the audience, one last time? All right, commissioners?
I would make a motion for approval on adding a condition. The only concern I have is if I put the condition on there to limit this to two horses, what if they want to have a dozen chickens in the future? Shouldn't affect it, right?
No, we got chickens out there.
We're just talking horses. And the reason for that is, three acres of pasture is important and adequate for that number of horses. Plus, it's going to be stored, they'll be housed inside during the night. So for those reasons, I'll vote for approval with additional condition to limit the two horses.
Got a motion and a second with conditions and one additional, or a motion, is there a second?
I'll second. Mr. Chair, I don't think we need that additional condition. I would prefer to do it without that additional condition.
I would agree.
Unless we can get a friendly amendment here from the.
I'm willing to remove that. I just thought as an appeasement, if that's all they were going to do, because like I say, I don't think there should be a limit either, but by the same token, you don't want a dozen horses on three acres either.
And Commissioner, the only problem that I would maybe have is the. And Commissioner, the only problem that I would maybe have is the possibility that one of our horses would become injured and then would be unridable. We would want a third. But absolutely, positively, under no circumstances are we going to have six, eight horses on this property. And we do scoop our current pasture daily.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
All of them, I have to remove it.
Are you okay with that on the second?
Yes.
Looking across to see whether they're okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve with the staff's recommendations, stipulations only. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, I would just say that communication amongst neighbors is super important. And so I would hope that maybe a glass of wine and a barbecue sandwich might help. But I would recall also that we had a situation where the dispute was not resolved. The people wanted to have a dog kennel, did not get to have it. So they got mammoth donkeys. And when the wind was blowing the right way, they burned that donkey dung. So the smoke went to their neighbor's house. And those things brayed like crazy, loud, loud, loud. And they're worthless as far as you can't milk them or anything. But it shows how neighborhood things can be. And it's better to be friendly and to let by God speak to by God and talk everything over as best you can.
Good comment. If you have a call or question, all those who pay, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign in the motion to approve here. Thank you all.
Thank you. I invited a mammoth.
We're going to go on to item number nine. Kevin, you're up.
All right. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is a rezoning item to zone a parcel located approximately three miles west of Sioux Falls from A1 Agricultural C Commercial. The petitioner would like to rezone this approximately 20 acre parcel or 18.2 of the 20 acre parcel to A1 Agricultural from A1 Agricultural. The petitioner has described out the south 260 feet and the west 300 feet to be remained as A1 Agricultural in order to preserve a residential building eligibility. The property is located adjacent to the south of Wild Water West, an amusement park. Right there. And the portion of the northeast of the parcel is adjacent to Highway 17. But the majority of the west side is next to an unimproved section line and accesses primarily along the county road that serves as the boundary for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. The, there are several, are many residential dwellings that are located in the building development just to the east of the parcel. And there are several dwellings in nearby areas to the west and to the south. A large, the Minnehaha County Council Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2015 says for the future growth that industrial and commercial areas should be primarily located in rural service areas. The subject property is not located in a rural service area. And the, the rural service areas are primarily proposed to create good planning. The next closest rural service area is one mile, I see in the staff report I wrote, two, is one mile north of this site. And it is only a quarter mile rural service area. So it's a rather small one, primarily to be a corner for that gas station and a few other small businesses in the area. The site is an agricultural production area, which is characterized as suitable for agricultural development. Goal five of the plan lists to discourage commercial, industrial, residential script development of land along transportation routes, particularly along those that serve municipal gateways. The site is located next to Wild Water West, which is a, is zone A1 Agricultural, but it is recognized that it is also primarily a commercial type use. The proposed site and location, yes, that's what I said. The spot zone, this might lead to spot zoning, since this is going to be agricultural all around within this one spot of commercial zoning. The rezoning proposal generally does not meet the policies and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. And the site is proposed outside of the rural service area and within the agricultural production area. Consideration should also be given to potential future land uses of the site. Although the petitioner has desire to have a reception hall, as has the description to that. Other commercial buildings or types may be built in the future. So in the end, the staff does recommend denial of this permit, this request, this zoning request. And I'll go through some pictures. So this is the site plan the petitioner has submitted. It does include the little area here for residential site in the A1 Agricultural. And although the, as a rezoning, we're only considering the property rezoning, this is his rough area for the banquet facility and driveway out to the county road. This is looking north onto the property. You can see in the distance background, the tree line that kind of goes along that creek, our intermittent stream, and then Wild Water West. This is looking west through the property. You can see some driveways and three groves of nearby residences. This is looking north up the unimproved county line road. You can see that it has been built up at one time. And it still looks like it's being used for some ATV type traffic. This is also looking to the east, looking at some residential properties. And you're right where this car is located is the intersection for the highway. And then this is looking north from the Wild Water West across the intermittent stream right here. This is a wetland area. Or I don't know if it's designated wetland, but it's a wetter area. So it's more just pasture as of right now. And this is from the Wild Water West driveway. You can see that it starts to curve there. So if the petitioner would like eventually try to go get access off the highway, he would have to obtain a permit from the DOT.
Questions for Kevin?
That wetland area, are they going to be driving over that? Or is that just a part that they're not going to use?
Um...
Are they going to build on top of it?
Well, the site plan is not real set in stone, because you will have to come to a conditional use permit for a banquet facility.
Looking at this map, where is that wet area that you pictured?
Right at the green line. So it looks like, from right here, he's planning on being just to the south of that wet area.
So he's going to be building on the wet area?
No, he's going to be building on the field, the drier area. The wet area is this green spot.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. Is the applicant here? Can you come forward and tell us a little bit about your project, state your name and address?
Can I give you guys a couple things to look at?
Yes, please come forward. Probably have one put up on the screen for...
I got one.
... Good evening.
Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Well, I'm Amanda Nelson. And joining me tonight is my husband, Josh Nelson. We live at 204 Park Drive in Lenox. As stated previously, we are requesting to rezon the property discussed and shown to commercial use. This property is 20 acres. And you can see by the site plan, we kind of talked about that a little bit. Approximately two acres of this property will remain zone agricultural to conserve the current building eligibility, which we also discussed. Our hopes with that piece of land is to actually build our own home there one day. We do live in Lenox. We own a house there. But because we want to build this building, we want to be right, right there. So we want to build a nice house there. Approximately 7.5 acres of this property located at the north end near Wild Water West is currently not being used for agricultural purposes due to its tendency to gather water. I would say, I did talk to the farmer on that land, too. And though he probably, there is, it's more toward the Wild Water West area. It's about half of that green chunk. And we did walk there, make sure. But the property is located up on a hill, too. So we know that it's a good area. Our elevation levels are really good. So we would build up on that hill.
The reason for the flooding down there is a broken drain tile. So that would get repaired. We wouldn't have the flooding issues eventually.
The property, the property, this 7.5 acres, we're probably going to use, this will be unused property, but maintained and landscaped as commercial land. Repair will be done, as Josh said, to the drain tile that's not functioning properly. We heard that it's about $3,000 to repair that. And the current owner told us that. But she's unwilling to repair that drain property. The remaining 10.5 acres will be used to operate the business. And I'm going to just put this on the screen, too, just to show you guys an idea of what we're, or maybe somebody can help.
We'll get it.
So this is a very similar building to kind of what we're, what we're looking at. Actually, I want it to be very, almost alike this building. It will be smaller, because we are in Sioux Falls, and this is actually in a bigger city. So our event size will be about 40 by 60 of that barn. And we want to hit approximately a capacity of not more than 300. So as seen in the picture, I mean, this is going to be a very beautiful, it's going to fit the country. It kind of needs to be in the country. It's a barn. It looks like a barn. In addition, we're going to add the driveway, a parking area, landscape patios, rock features, trees, and a large baller garden. We believe that the space is very unique to Sioux Falls as it is designed with a country feel in mind, including all wood interiors, balcony, rustic lighting, locks, grand staircase, and amenities for a modern facility, including bathrooms and small kitchen. And I'll just show you a little bit of an example of, I'll probably look for it, that way. This is, this is what we want it to look like inside. So as you can see, it does look like a barn, which is again, why we need to be close to the country. Facilities like this one are popping up all over the United States. Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls currently does not have a venue like this. And there's a high desire for this barn-like experience. Our nearest barn centers like this are Rapid City, the cities Minneapolis and Omaha has one similar to this. This space will be used for family gatherings, reunions, weddings, and meeting space. And we are planning on building the building too cold, of course. We already have several drawings made, which is, there is a drawing in your packet for that interior floor space. We have a project engineer on that. The total project cost is approximately $750,000. So it's not, we're not just, you know, we've saved our life savings for this. We have spoken to many of the abutting and surrounding land owners. We have heard positive comments and neighbor's blessings. We will be and have been very sensitive to the neighbors and to ensure that we are not going to affect their land and work with them. This is why we've put great effort into this, to obtain their buy-in. We believe that this area is, we believe that this is the best area for this project because of the following. The area has commercial activity, the Wild Water West amusement park adjoining the land, large commercial storage sheds in the area, office spaces, and the gas station. Second, it is located off Highway 17 for easy access for guests. Third, we believe that this will have a very minimal traffic impact for the neighbors. And it will, and the space is more than 600 feet away from any neighboring houses. And it's very aesthetically pleasing property for the backdrop, which is currently a water park, older storage sheds, and buildings. Fourth, the space is an adequate land amount to create a country view and enhance the overall atmosphere we are trying to achieve. Yet located near Sioux Falls and amenities, a space like this will need to be successful, such as hotels, churches, and restaurants. The proposed property is located a half, one mile, one mile from the current service area. I did hear that. And the business plan is only one that will work beyond the rural service area, as we need this large amount of space. And we also want to protect so we can have our garden. We want to protect that land around us. And we think that being right there will protect us from, you know, if a commercial building wants to come beside us, we would be okay with that, because we have adequate land to protect ourselves from that. After surveying all the spaces in the Sioux Falls city, or city, outside the city limits, it is our opinion that this is the best area for a business of this type. Fifth, the space will create, again, minimal traffic impacts. We estimate that the traffic levels will be higher between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM on Saturday nights, or 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM. Wedding's the largest expected event in Sioux Falls, average around 140 people. This adds approximately 75 cars at a high level to the flow of Highway 17 and off the gravel road about 10% of the year. So not much traffic impact. Lastly, we will create economic development. This facility will be one of a kind for the area. We estimate that we will get customers from, or customers from 100 miles away of our facility that will shop, eat, stay, and play in Sioux Falls. In addition, we hope to create job opportunities for the community. In summary, my husband and I work and live in the Sioux Falls area. And we have great pride in the community, as this is where we grew up. We have owned a successful, successful construction company for several years. And we have worked, and I have worked in banking for 10 years, currently an assistant vice president. And I hold an MBA from the University of Sioux Falls. We are members of the HBA, involved in the chamber. In addition, we give back to the community through donations and serving on local boards. We are dedicated to the community. And we believe that this, this proposed plan will enhance our community and a sought-after venue for many families. We have been in many discussions with county planners and commissioners and have been advised of finding a location near commercial activities and located close to a major roadway. We believe we have met these recommendations with our proposed plans. And we'd welcome any questions you have.
Questions for the House?
Impressive-looking business. And again, I don't doubt that probably a need for it. Did you, and I don't mean this in a critical way, I'm just asking, had you spent any time with the Council Comprehensive Plan to see where we had commercial zoning in and around the city and where you wouldn't have to rezon? Did you spend some time with staff, maybe, talking about that?
Well, yes, we have. We've actually, you know, we've been doing this for two and a half years, probably. A long time. And, you know, we've been giving, given advice. Mostly, we've been looking in Lincoln County, because we live in Lenox. So we do want to be kind of close to that area.
Sure.
And we have, you know, we've been given that, those recommendations. But when we get too close to town, we're close to too many neighbors. And we just, we can't be, we can't be that close to, you know, if Sioux Falls is going to come and grow on us, we have to have a while before it gets there.
I see.
So...
We have a developable space to pretty much make a nature preserve around it.
Yep.
To buy 20 acres right on the side of Sioux Falls, you'd have to be abilliated by that energy.
Yeah. We want to be far enough. And we think that the, you know, the landscape toward, I mean, even the Wild Water West is there. We're planning on building trees. And we believe that it has a good view. I mean, we know that there's farmers there. And we have talked to a lot of, a lot of different people. And as far as we know, that we haven't, you know, everybody's okay with it, even the large farmers, that we're not going to disrupt their activity.
I have been in contact with townships that maintain the roads, both Allenworth and Trout and Ron Elbers, with the deputy township, who said they had no objection to the, to the build. And then Paul Nelson said, he just wanted to be involved in knowing the placement of approach that's going on with the property.
I do want to make one final comment, too, because we, you know, our plans would be to try to get that approach back off of Highway 17. We did, you know, submit the zoning application with the approach off the gravel. I do want to make one final comment too, because we, you know, our plans would be to try to get that approach back off of Highway 17. We did, you know, submit the zoning application with the approach off of gravel because we thought that our chances were higher that way. We think that both are very viable options actually. I mean, we would like Highway 17 so we don't have to do, you know, there's two neighbors right there, is that we may affect. And we don't want, you know, we think it's a minimum impact, 10% of the year is not much. But at the same time, we are going to try and we are in the application process for that. But as you guys know, I mean, it is, yeah, it can be a little bit tougher because they have certain, certain things. So we're working on that too.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to this item? So please come forward, state your name and address. Yes, sir.
My name's Kirk Walters, I live at 46602-268th Street. Our property is east of this project. I have two concerns. Number one was the commercial that you kind of addressed when you talked about it, that more commercial business is going in there. And the biggest one is that when we originally talked to them, they were talking about the Quorshop Highway 17. Well, now that it's coming off the county road, you know, 75 cars doesn't sound like very much. Should have lived there when lifelight was going on. 75 cars is a lot of cars in an hour that go by your place and that's about the same thing that's going to happen. And there's a dust storm out there then. And anytime you get people, especially people that have been maybe indulging a little bit, your yard starts being a parking lot for them and it's just a mess. That's, that's my concern. I mean, I, I think it's a neat project, it's just like, you know, I'm getting things straight as long as it's somebody else's backyard, not mine. But that's, that's my big concern is that on the county road, the driveway on the county road.
Mr. Walters, are you east of Highway 17 then, or, your property is east of Highway 17 in that development?
I'm west of 17.
You're west.
I'm one of the three homes that's, that's west of 17.
Ah, you're right there.
Yep. Right, right next to approach, yep.
And the road bed that you showed is, is our land.
That's part of, that's, that was abandoned about 12 years ago.
Highway 17 used to come down and then they become squared up. And so that farmer got 33 feet and we got 33 feet. And 33 feet though, shown as road is our road.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've got animals and things out there and, and they were coming off 17, it looked a lot better.
Thank you.
Any questions for the other members? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
I'm Harlem Handa. I'm Harlem Handa, I live at 46608-268th Street, neighbor to the Walters. I'm between Highway 17 and the Walters, west of 17. Couple were out to visit us, appreciate your, your call. My concern echoes the Walters' concern about traffic and the, we don't know which way the DOT will go with this. If it does go in the county road, that's going to be a lot of traffic on there and I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about, you know, I hope this business, you get it going, I hope it goes, I really do, because I like seeing businesses. But what if it doesn't? And that land is rezoned? What can come in there then? That's, that bothers me. There's a lot of unknowns with this and you've talked a lot about, your speculation was good, your dreams are good, but where's the hard data here? That, you know, you hope, you think, but what, what is really going to be? And so I'm, I'm just concerned about if this doesn't go, don't get me wrong, I'm fault for new businesses. But if not, I shudder to think what could come there if the land is rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the staff.
I guess we have one more here, please. Yes, sir.
My name's Lee Crins, 26756-463rd Avenue. I farm, I farm this piece of property. It's been in the family since early 1900s. My grandpa farmed it, my dad, I do, my son, we've gone in time. And she had mentioned that she contacted the guy who farmed it, which I've never met before.
I think Roberto, Bobby did.
She is my landlady.
Okay, yes, yep.
You, you had never contacted me. I, I had no idea what was going on until the neighbor right across the road told me about it one day. I didn't have clue what was going on. And as far as wetland, I would say that, that is wet. I've seen three and four foot of water down in the hay ground and where they proposed to put the building. That, that is, that is very, very wet in there. And as far as some kind of sewer system, you go down, what, six, eight foot for a perck test? Yeah, that's going to flood with water. Just this little shot of rain that we had the other night, had like three-quarter inch. And right now there's water sitting where they proposed to put the building. The only spot that would possibly be adequate to put a building like that is where they think about putting a house, right next to the gravel road. There is three drainage ditches going from the south, right kind of where they want to put the barn support. In that grass area, there's two waterways in there for overflow of the Walling Creek. And over the years, Water West has been, has been flooded. If you get four, five, six inch rain, which has happened before, you know, it's not a good situation out there. So have, have you bought the land or is it still regurgitating?
Yeah, well, direct your questions to us and we'll.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if they have purchased the land yet or not, I haven't, I haven't heard.
I, I don't. Yeah, any other concerns or comments you want to make?
Well, I guess Bobby.
Any questions for Lee? Thank you. Was a question of the applicant, so if you'd come back to the mic, if you, if you cared to respond and maybe there's other, if you could make a brief.
Oh, just one, yeah. So Mr. Crins, right?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. Sorry about that. Yes, we have a purchase agreement on the land, contingent on zoning. And just to.
Even if this does go through, are you still going to purchase the ground?
Um, we're not sure. We'll see. So, you know, Mr. Crins did say that we were, you know, a lot of water there. We have looked at elevation. It is not in a flood area. Even the new maps that came out, or that are coming out, we've even, you know, done some research and we're far away from the flood area and I think Josh has looked a little bit into that. In addition, I just want to make sure that you guys know, we are not getting a liquor license and I know there was just a little bit of reference to that. We will have a beer and wine license only and I know that has nothing to do with the rezoning. But that area for the barn, because it's not in a flood zone, we should be good where it goes. If not, we'll move it back just a little bit.
Okay. There was over 10 feet elevation from the road to where that flood grass line starts.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Someone has another question for you. I have.
At this point, at this point, I'm closing the floor to any further testimony. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners, Mr. Bart.
Yeah, I just have a question being, did we need to do any notification in Lincoln County on this?
We did.
Okay.
Commissioners?
Well, my position will be I'll support the staff on this because it does, it is, because Wildwater West has been there forever. And it does get the strip feel, like they're probably, it's probably, it's a nice project, but that's not what this is about. This is about commercial zoning. And as a commercial zone, it's not by any commercial zone there. It's not by a service area. It's not, like I say, in the north third of it, that is the Walling outlet, right? The Walling Creek. And that would be usable in the future. But I still think it's inappropriate and that would be my position on this. As I say, this, as was mentioned, this is pretty close to spot zone. I have to think that, you know, I guess I would say I think it is spot zoning, all right? And aside from that, the concern about traffic going out on the county road, I think, is extremely valid and getting access onto 17 is going to be, you know, I would think next to impossible because of the sightlines resulting from a curve in the, it's, it's not an, i- if, if it wasn't a spot zoning, I'd still be concerned about traffic. So those two combined would make me concerned about it, I guess.
I would, I would agree. I think it's beautiful, it's a wonderful plan. I think we aren't voting on the plan, we're voting on the land use. And unfortunately, I agree with what the other commissioners have stated, that this is just not the right, not the right place.
Not the right place for that piece of land, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm not completely in agreement with you three. I, I think that with Wildwater West being there, it exists outside of our plan just as much as if there was a, an airport there. I mean, it might not be the location that we planned Wildwater West to be. But, you know, I think that it's a logical place for a business to want to locate in a favor business.
It's not about favoring business or nothing. Because what's going to happen there, like I say, just look at the map. All of a sudden, you're going to have Wildwater West, you're going to have 100 yards of nothing and then you're going to have commercial because of the wet area. So now that that doesn't constitute a spot location, I don't know what does. Because again, there is no commercial property in that area since planning and zoning went into effect in 1985. Even if Wildwater West was zoned commercial and then everything all the way up to the corner it was, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a gap between Wildwater West and our commercial zone area. So, but even if there wasn't, Commissioner Bart, from a dialogue, I'm not, what do you think about the traffic concern?
You know, I certainly think that's reasonable, but if you look at traffic anywhere in this county, it's getting crazy out there.
It is.
And so we obviously are going to have to do more work on, on roads, whether their township, county, or state. I do appreciate your perspective on that though.
Okay. Any further discussion, I entertain a motion. I vote for denial. Is there a motion?
This is a previous discussion.
Make it a motion.
Yes.
One second.
A motion and a second to deny further conversation. So, no further discussion, I'll call a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same side.
Aye.
Motion to deny curfew.
Four to one.
Four to one.
What?
It's four to one.
Did I vote? There's three, is that?
Three to one. Three to one.
Uh?
Yeah.
I don't have to vote.
We have a lot less definitely.
Mr. Chairman, I can be a mystery. All right. We're on to item number 11.
Scott, do you want to gather these for these folks?
Yeah, I'll get them for them.
I have to recuse myself on this one.
Sure. Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department.
What's that?
This petitioner will use permit number 1537 for a class beef cattle CAFO property located two and a half miles southwest of Harper. This, this permit has come before last month and was deferred because of inadequate site plans lack information as part of the application. As noted, the subject property is two and a half miles southwest of Harper. The petitioner currently operates an existing facility located approximately half mile to the west of the proposed CAFO site. And he intends on moving that facility to this new site. The new site will hold 749 animal units, which would be beef cattle, as they're equivalent to one animal unit per cow. So it would be 749 cows, cattle. The proposed site, I'll go right to the site plan. This is the proposed site plan. The site plan is located 150 feet east of an intermittent stream that eventually feeds into the waterway that becomes, that is the intermittent stream that is the overflow of the grass from the creek. This is a distance further from the, than the existing CAFO and that's why it is moving here with the state aid from the NRC. The petitioner's site plan includes an area that's 650 feet by 200 feet for a barn that is described as a site as a bed pack facility. And one point, it is described as 40 feet tall. Later, the petitioner did describe the barn in the, in the site plan description as 65,000 square feet, which would be 100 feet by 600 square feet, and described that this is the general area for that 160, 100 foot by 650 square foot, or foot barn. So that it has a little bit of wiggle room in where it's placed. But it's located 50 feet off of the property line in both the west and the south where the road is. The site also includes an area for 200 feet by 200 feet labeled as stack slab, a manure containment facility. It too is also 50 feet from the property and has a description of 10,000 square feet. So that'd be a 100 by 100 square foot facility, which would be located in that area. The site plan includes two driveways, one which is an existing field approach on the west edge of the property and one that's a, going to be a new field, a new approach on the east end of the barn. Both approaches will be off of 2062nd Street. Both, all driveways and surfaces will be required to have gravel surface with a minimum four inches thick. And it is suggested that the manure and loading, unloading areas have a 15-foot buffer which from the, the property line to the south from the roadway, from the front yard, because that is the standard for parking lots within the ordinance. So a 15-foot is the suggested buffer. For the drainage, the drainage of the property generally shows these arrows in this, let me guys pointer back up. The arrows and then this, this unmapped drainage way here. The, most of the drainage appears to be coming into this unmapped drainage way that you can see in some of the pictures and the topography that flows in that direction. The manure containment facility will contain all rainwater and be graded so that rainwater will not flow into or out of the containment facility. The CAFO does also meet all setback requirements. Previous map showed, well beyond all setback requirements. The landscaping plan is, is supposed, is, as part of the ordinance is designed, should be designed to assist in the dispersal of odors. The petitioner has reviewed this requirement and has stated that no trees in the odor dispersal is under control. Because, and I, and he submitted as part of his landscaping plan of why he doesn't think there should be any trees based on the South Dakota Odor Foot Control Tool, which I'll go describe in a little bit. The pest control plan includes methods to, to control rats and flies. The petitioner has stated that rats will be controlled by using barn cats and flies will be controlled as, as needed basis. And the as-needed basis will be using larvicide as problems persist. Staff finds that the pest control plan is generally inadequate because there is no special. Because, and I, and he submitted as part of his landscaping plan of why he doesn't think there should be any trees based on the South Dakota odor footprint tool, which I will describe in a little bit. The pest control plan includes methods to, to control rats and flies. The petitioner has stated that rats will be controlled by using barn cats, and flies will be controlled as an as-needed basis. And the as-needed basis will be using larvicide as problems persist. Staff finds that the pest control plan is generally inadequate because there is no schedule or threshold described as part of the plan. And also, the effectiveness of barn cats is questionable. Pests may affect residential development and may prevent the location of other agricultural operations in the facility because of potential for refuge for pests. The petitioner has, has, does include odor control in the fact that he has submitted maps for the South Dakota odor footprint tool. He has submitted this map drawn to scale. And I do have a picture of it, but it's difficult to see on that. And it is drawn to scale. It shows where the setbacks are from the nearest neighbors as far as the odor control tool has shown where the most odor comes from. The odor control tool includes that there are two dwellings that are located within the ninety-nine percent annoyance-free zone. And one of them has submitted, the closest dwelling has submitted a waiver for the CAFO, although it does not require one. The petitioner includes a dead animal control plan. It states that he will use a rendering service that will pick up animals no more than seventy-two hours after they find the animal. The long distance time is because of the potential for an animal to die on a weekend or holiday, which would become difficult to give a rendering service there sooner. It is a major part of the application. The petitioner has submitted a nutrient management plan. The nutrient management plan does show that he has enough land available for the nutrients. The nutrient management plan is also a comprehensive plan between this proposed facility and the recently approved dairy CAFO that's just, is operated within the same family located to the west of the property. It is stated in the plan that he will apply the manure twice a year to the fields and incorporate the manure within forty hour, forty-eight hours after application. Several conditional use permit criteria should be addressed as looking at CAFO or any other conditional uses. The effective use and enjoyment of the property in the surrounding area. The surrounding area is currently low density and primarily agricultural. The proposed CAFO will have little effect on the current land uses because, based on the low density agricultural uses. The effect on normal and early development improves surrounding, improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Now this, the potential for future development of agricultural and residential uses may be affected in the future. However, and primarily because the petitioner has proposed few provisions to control undisguarable effects of a CAFO. The future residential development, however, will have to include, be required to sign the right to farm covenant to be placed on the deed as part of the construction of the dwelling. So, and the plan repeatedly notes that we should look at agricultural production, agricultural production area. Three, the utility access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. As stated, there will be two driveways, and staff is required, would like to require that there be fifteen-foot setback from the front yard. This area will, the creating of this CAFO will create a large area of impervious service, surface from the road and from the gravel and from the rooftop of the, the barn. And as part of the comprehensive plan, we encourage as low-impact development. And therefore, the waterway that is not mapped to the west of the, the site that is primarily going to be where the drainage is, staff recommends that a grass filter strip be included in mouth for the non-mapped waterway to slow down absorbed runoff in water before it enters the creek. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The site will have plenty of space for off-street parking. You also, as stated before, be required to have gravel surfaces for all driveways. And the measures are taking to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration. It is inherent nature of part of a CAFO that there will be a certain amount of nuisance-type issues involved with it, especially odor, fumes, and dust. The petitioner has submitted few and obscure ways to reduce these nuisances. The nuisance, and in addition, nuisance enforcement is difficult to pursue in agricultural operations once permitted because of many farming exemptions and the right to farm covenant. It is up to planning commission to decide if provisions of stated within this, that petitioner submitted materials are enough to approve this conditional use. And number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in this comprehensive plan. The beef CAFO will have to comply with all conditions of the permit and the zoning ordinance. The, this area of the county is an agricultural production area in the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. And it's stated in the plan that this area should protect, preserve, and promote agricultural uses and the economic viability of farming operations. It also states in this plan that resources should be, the comprehensive plan says that we should support the state programs that are designed to support farming operations such as that that's moving this building into this new location. I'll go over some of the pictures here first.
Just a minute, could we go back one for a second? What does that stuff say down in the lower left-hand corner? Like, it says seven foot, you know, two inches up from the left side there. What does that mean?
May I grab my?
Seven foot. What does that mean?
Setback.
Is it thirty?
Thirty foot side.
Just looking at that, it's, you know...
That's, that's the line for the seven-foot setback? Because it's pointing to that line that's kind of draws down there.
It's down here, that's where it's...
And then there is a little arrow there.
Yes.
Between the facility and the edge of the paper.
Yeah.
That says fifty feet, and it kind of goes into the stack slab. And that's where you get the fifty-foot setback from the property.
One more time for me, Kevin.
So, I'll kind of point it on the screen, too. So right here, there's a little arrow, double-ended arrow.
Yeah, see that?
And then there's a, it'll leading from that into the stack slab here that says fifty feet, right?
Yep. So there's fifty feet between...
The facility and the property line.
Yeah, so then, so what is the seven foot's about? That's above it?
The seven foot is the required setback.
So they've got more than seven, they've got an extra forty-three, is what you're saying?
Okay.
Okay.
This is kind of the, the paper map from the group. I don't know if you can see it too well. You can see these dots are primarily, are the houses. You can see where he's drawing these lines for setbacks, the odor control. A little closer look at that. This is a range for the dwellings and odor control again. This one is in that ninety-nine percent annoyance-free within that, so it'd be the ninety-eight percentile range. There are some pictures. This is that waterway to, just on the other property, to the west of the property line. As you can see in the background, it's brought up that this, there used to be kind of a farmstead there. There's some farm buildings in there, driveway going up there. The picture of the waterway. This is a listed, or this is an intermittent stream that's mapped. There's the, the road going to the east. And there's the existing field approach. And this is looking straight north, right up the middle of the building, at the top of the hill. This is looking down to the, the property on the northeast. That's the closest property or dwelling on the map.
You're looking to the south now, or looking to the...
This is to the northeast.
Looking to the northeast from the road.
Yep, from the road. Yep, from the site. This is kind of from the top of the hill, looking back to that farmstead on the, the west property. That, the old former farmstead that has the few buildings there. And then this is the drainage way that is not mapped, but is, you can kind of see how it dips here all the way down to the creek. And that's going to be where the primary drainage will go. And this is from the, the north. This is looking up the hill. The CAFO would be somewhere about here. And this is the creek that it'll eventually drain into.
So you're looking south there?
So, yep, yeah, excuse me. This is looking south, and on, on the north side there. So, I suppose we need the stack conditions. So staff finds the proposed CAFO is acceptable land use under the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit fifteen thirty-seven with the following conditions. The facility shall be, one, the facility shall be limited to seven hundred and forty-nine animal units in size. Two, only beef cattle shall be confined in the CAFO. Three, no animals shall be kept in the constant, in the concentrated or quantity as defined CAFO on the petitioner's farmstead located at two six one nine three, four hundred and sixtieth animal. All animals shall be removed from the farmstead within ninety days of the completion of the constructed, construction of the barn and waste containment facility of the new CAFO. Four, the CAFO shall comply with all applicable regulations of the county zoning ordinance. Five, the facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the staff at Minnehawke County Planning Department. Major, major changes will be required, an amendment to this permit in a public hearing. Six, the manure containment facility must be in performance with South Dakota Department and environment, of environment and natural resources design standards for any newly constructed waste containment facility. A registered professional engineer shall certify the plan specifications and the construction of the new facility. Seven, approval must be obtained by township for the construction of new road access. Eight, all driveways, parking, and loading areas within the CAFO must comply with minimum standards that are listed in sections fifteen point oh four of the zoning ordinance for Minnehawke County. Nine, all driveways, parking, and loading areas must have a setback of a minimum fifteen feet from the front yard property line. Ten, an address sign must be purchased and at the planning department and placed in the driveway of the facility. Eleven, no water shall be allowed to sit in the site in a stagnant state for longer than ten days without using mosquito control. This includes, but is not limited to puddles, buckets, the new containers, facility, and tires. Twelve, a rendering service must meet, must be used to pick up and remove dead animals from the property. Thirteen, the waterway to the west of the CAFO site shall have a minimum of one hundred feet grass filter planted from the mouth of the waterway into the intermittent stream north of the CAFO. The grass filter will be planted at a minimum, and maintained at a minimum of thirty feet wide. Fourteen, a proposed barn shall have an engineer-certified drawings that shall be submitted for review by the planning, the building inspector prior to issuance of the building permit. Fifteen, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. And sixteen, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the CAFO at any time after proper notice from the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in Minnehawke County zoning ordinance. Do you have any other questions?
I have one question. Number five, who is to say what a, a minor changes and a major changes?
It will be the planning director. So if we wanted to change that to say that approved by the planning director, that would be the one to make that change, that decision. But that'd be, yeah, please, make that call.
Another question for Kevin? Kevin, I've got one, and stipulation three, which is about no animals kept at the other location once the construction is complete. Can you explain for the, I guess for the audience and the applicant's benefit, once a building permit's pulled, it only got a year to complete the project, is that right?
That is correct.
Right.
Yes, this, this conditional use permit has a, one year before the use of the property begins. And then once the building permit is pulled, then he has a year. And if it takes a little longer, he can get an extension for one hundred and eighty days, so he can have up to a year and a half to finish his, his building.
Yeah, so possibly, I, I get the sense that we might even nail this down more tightly. And because of that, I'm wondering, what do you think if we were to say that it needs to be within ninety days of the completion of the construction, or the lapse of one year from the pulling of the building permit, whichever is shorter? So that, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, but if you're pretty good at holding it to, to the next, you know, I guess eighteen months, what you said, a hundred and eight, I just worry that something's not going to get done. And three years later, they're going to say, well, the construction's not done, that's why I have to move the cows. And number twelve, they'd said in their control plan that they, they'd remove the animals within seventy-two hours. So I think possibly we should want to add that to within seventy-two hours of the death of the animal. And Kevin, what?
Since, that was number twelve?
Yeah. Now, the, you're suggesting that, and I'm glad that we're pinning it down because there's a lot of difference here, Kevin, between the site plan and the narrative. So you're pinning it down to this plan, is that correct?
Yes.
So you're good with the two hundred by two hundred rather than the thousand square feet on the, on the stack slab facility?
It was not, it's not described, excuse me. It's described in the narrative.
Yes.
Here, as part of, as ten thousand or six thousand, sixty-five thousand. And the way that I, it was described to me when he submitted the site plan, that this would be the area of those two. So I guess, and perhaps that would be a good thing to include in the conditions, to limit these sizes, and that this would be the size of the, the facilities.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just confused because the, is the facility, the thing that's shown here, turns out to be thirteen hundred square feet? But we're saying in the narrative, it could be sixty-five thousand square feet?
So the, the narrative says it's sixty-five thousand square feet. The site plan says it's going to be somewhere in this six hundred and fifty foot by two hundred foot area, which would be twice that. A hundred and...
Yeah, thirteen thousand, yeah, thirty thousand.
Hundred and thirty thousand.
Hundred and thirty thousand, that's, I've got decimal point problem, that's my problem. So we, we need to nail down the size, I think, somehow. So it's more than just the site plan, I think it's the narrative or something. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, going back to your original comment about, you know, it would be possible, wouldn't it, that the facility would be used before it was completed?
Yeah.
So therefore, you'd have two things going on at the same time. The original would never be shut down, and this would never be finished.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you for fixing me up on my, my decimal points. And any other question for Kevin? Thank you. Is the app pinned here? Can you come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what your project?
Tyler Alders, two six one nine three, four hundred and sixty thousand.
Tyler Alders, 26193 460th Animal. I'm speaking on behalf of this application. First of all, in regards to pest control, um, you've said as needed. You know, barn cats might not necessarily be enough pest control. And if there is a rat issue, we'll be using poison. I'm not setting an exact date when I'm putting out rat poison. I've worked for the state of South Dakota before poisoning prairie dogs. They got pretty stringent times when they want the poison out there. You can't put it out there if there isn't an issue. So, I'm not going to set a schedule and have poison laying all over my barn if I don't have a rat issue. I've lived on our place for 25 years. We've had a rat problem one time in our activation. It was about three years ago. And one thing that went along with that is we had about three cats at the time. And they came in our salvage pile, and I'll tell you what, they populated in a hurry. My sister got two cats from the neighbor lady. We had four batches of kittens. Next thing you know, there's three cats every time I go up to a bunker, hanging on the walls, under the feed bunks, everywhere. I haven't seen a rat in 18 months, and we had quite a few of them. One time over the years, and the common thing was no cats. But if there is more issue, more things will be done. But we're not setting a stringent plan. Then, when we, okay, now on fly control. I've been to a few CAFOs. Some have fly control plans, some don't. We went to a place there, they, I mean, they had very few flies. He wasn't home, so he called them up. What, what do you do for fly control? Nothing. They don't have a fly control plan. Others do. I, I'm not saying I don't need one, but to have a schedule that says, once a week, I'm going to spray flies? If there's not a fly control issue, we're not going to spray, spray flies. The threshold, I've done a lot of research on this thing, on this, this whole facility. And a lot of the research I've come up with has just been, well, we don't like that, so we're going to recommend this. And it's just a matter of likes, it's not, I haven't had things backing up with an F state. So, if there's going to be a threshold in place, I feel that maybe the county needs to do some research and put this in their condition that, hey, here's the threshold. Because if you're asking me to set the threshold, is that any different than as is? So, in regards to the pest control plan, that's where we're at on that. I guess I want to take a look at the conditions, or the recommendations. First of all, I want to go with number two. Only beef cattle shall be confined in the CAFO. Uh, I'm feeding feeder cattle, first of all. Most of my cattle will be Holsteins, or my father's going to be buying my Holsteins. So it's going to be mostly Holsteins in the facility, so, you know. We, I've split hairs enough over the last one. I mean, that's something to look into. And at the same time, I haven't read anywhere through this conditional use that it states that it has to be one animal or the other. And my setbacks don't get changed on whether it's one animal or the other. They already have that, you know, everything has its certain animal units. So, this facility is based on 749 animal units. I know I got my odor control map. I went and plugged in a swine bed pack. It almost doubled my score. Still, there isn't a single neighbor who falls in the 98% annoyance circle. So, that's using the most, you know, if, if that was the reason for putting it, that's the strongest one, and we're not even there. Then number three, I've also done, I've read through this. I haven't read anything about closing out CAFOs. I've done a lot of research. I haven't found anything about, I can't find any information on only multiple CAFOs. I mean, I, I haven't found anything. This agreement to close down our existing CAFO is between me and the NRCS. They're writing a check, and that's between me and them. There's aspects of our current operation that qualify to still be ran, have livestock run down. We plan to use the one facility for caddying. It's confined, and that's an agreement between me and the NRCS. Minnehaw County wants to write a check, so then, condition three, I'm, I'm all for it too. I'll, we'll completely empty out that CAFO. But that's an agreement between me and the NRCS, and I haven't found anything anywhere else saying that that even needs to be done. And then, I just have a question about Article 13. Um, the waterway, 100 foot minimum, and then off the north side of the facility. Uh, most of our water's going to be flowing to the east and to the west. Uh, the manure system is mostly to the north, based on the lay of the land. The water isn't even going to flow north, so where are we going to exactly put this? Stuff going to the east moves through the fields. There's over 1,000 feet before it gets to a creek to filter it. To the west, that stream is, intermittent stream is essentially a filter strip of its own, its own right. But I guess those are the three things I have questions about with the recommendations. Hi. Noah, Kevin showed this one earlier, showing the waterway. There's obviously grass already there. And most of the water is, I mean, maybe 50% of the roof water will be flowing this way. This is all clear water. Uh, this isn't runoff out of my facilities. I got to contain that. This isn't runoff out of my looting system. This is all clear water. This will, as you can see, comes, it actually exits back onto our property. And there's pretty, a lot of grass there to work as a filter strip. I took these pictures after an inch and a half rain. There wasn't any water in the bottom of this. I mean, it's not, this isn't a regular running creek. It is an intermittent stream. And this is the creek that it does run down into. That's over, well over 1,000 feet of grass that is running through just to get to the stream to start with, so. Got a lot more, but I guess I'm, well, I'm odor, I guess. First of all, for odor dispersion, we have crops, they do a lot for dispersion around this facility. I feel like I'm almost, the fact that I moved outside of setbacks has kind of got me really excited about, you know, on trees. We've moved outside everybody's setbacks. We're well outside of everybody's setbacks, you know. My, my biggest concern with trees, I, I'm not saying that I'm not going to plant trees someday in certain areas, but my biggest concern about trees is I was given this huge packet of information to Minnehaw County Conservation District, through Kevin, and it doesn't mention anything about ventilation, or how, how to place things to not affect the ventilation in my barn. You know, I'm worried about cow comfort. And air moving through my barn also helps keep flies off them. It helps with pest control and everything else. So there, there's no mention of any of that in there, concerns of mine. So, I'm already taking care of the nuisance part by making a proactive coach to move away from the neighbors. So, that's my, my thought on odor control, so. So I guess I'm, questions?
We oftentimes will see, um, a willingness and eagerness to try and make sure that they don't have odors by planting, uh, shelter belts, trees around the perimeter of the area that it's going to be in as a good gesture. Well, you might, um, have the 99% from the odor control model to an existing residence, to the property that is going to be used by other folks could be closer yet. It might not be a residence today, but I think there might be building eligibility that could be impacted as well, so. The setbacks are also just guidelines, right?
Yeah, and, and they are guidelines. Uh, one thing about the setbacks is you look at them, you know, there was reasoning behind their setbacks. And if everybody else honors the setbacks, they will not have control of the odors. If they don't, they inherently choose to move into that area. And my opinion is, well, maybe they should look at planting some trees as well. Because if I'm planting trees on my side of the fence line, and they have an issue with how they're being grown, well, they're on my side of the fence line. If you want to worry about trees, grow them on your side. My biggest-
You indicated a willingness to plant, or you said you might plant trees. I've heard a lot of mites. What, what do you plan on doing?
It, we might put in ostriches down the road, but as of right now, there is no plan to plant trees.
Okay.
Um, that, that isn't, you know, our intention. You know, and it's, I, I've read through this. There, there isn't a requirement for trees.
The requirements are set at this committee, uh, at this body, when you ask for a conditional use permit.
Mm-hmm.
Because they are guidelines. We're here to try and mitigate-
Yeah.
-concerns, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm all for mitigating concerns, and I've already taken steps to mitigate those even more. Another thing is with, if you're going to enclose a place with trees, it's not necessarily dispersing it either, because you're just holding all the odors there. Eventually, they're going to escape, you know, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Probably eventually. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
Warren Gady, 46134 463rd Street. I own a property just across the road to the south. And I think this young gentleman's taken on a heck of a project. Gave him permission to build a dairy. I was just going to let him see how that turns out first before you give him a permit for this other mon- monotony of a building that's going to go up over there. So, that's, that's my concern, is let's see how they handle this dairy first before you give them another permit and issue another building, and see how he does with that. I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dennis Kapperman, 45994 263rd Street. Property owner adjacent to the west side of this property. You heard my, uh, issues and concerns at the prior meeting. Probably don't, isn't going to do me a whole lot of good to get up here and explain to you why I don't think it should go through, but my, uh, biggest concern is by passing this now, you've boxed my property in both to the east and to the west, limited my ability for any of my future growth that I may want to do on my half section of property, confined both in the center of both areas. Also, this, um, proposed site going up, still objecting to the closeness and the relativity to my property line. It's, it's awful tight. I do have concerns about, you know, the, uh, the amount of water that may run across it. Yes, it is grass, uh, also the amount of snow and other obstacles that may be withheld at that property. And, uh, I just hope that we can, if, if this is approved, that, uh, we can get along on the, on the fence line aspect and that they will control their manure in a proper and manageable way. So, uh, just like to let you know again, I'm not in favor of this project. Uh, naturally, it's not in any one of yours backyards, but again, this one will be in mine. So, I guess I'll put up with it, and we'll go from there.
Dennis, can I ask you a question? Uh, so your property is immediately west there, is that correct?
Yeah, those, those pictures that these guys so kindly showed of my wife's future retirement home,
Right there.
is now at stake, so.
Yep, okay.
That was all the grassland directly to the west and, and the abandoned building site that I'd, uh, kept the trees and stuff, picked up and, and managed, and I do have cattle running in that pasture at this current site, but, uh, we'll just have to proceed from there.
With the mouse, excuse me, go. I'm sorry, the mouse moved. I'm-
He owns this property here.
Right here.
But immediately there to the west-
Go back to those pretty pictures that you had up-
All of the road is-
Ideal building site that I was going to maintain.
And you have building eligibility, if I remember correctly from-
Oh, yeah, I got the whole half section, so I got Google's building sites, but yeah. That building site, I've had that now for, well, I acquired the land 28 years ago. Like you said, it's been, uh, picked up, maintained, cleaned, yeah, the barn, it's just a barn. It was used as a calf housing facility for a few years, and now it's, uh, just ready for demolition. But that is a, quite a nice location. I'm sure you've all driven by it and looked at it, admired it, probably wondered who had it so you could buy it and put your house up there. At that, any more questions?
Yes, I do. So, if you were us, uh, what would you do to improve, approve it to, you know, saying, hey, you know, we really are supportive of the ag industry in, in this county? CAFOs are, especially in a, in this, in any aspects of this are a good plan. But what would you do to improve this plan to make it more palatable to you?
Well, I guess if I was going to put up a facility of this magnitude, and I'm sure it's going to be a, a great facility when it's done, but I would leave myself a little more room, so to speak. 50 feet back, 50 feet back, doesn't, you're, you're boxing yourself into a corner. I know, I've lived on a corner lot my whole life, and I'm boxed in by two roads, and, and there's nothing that you can do to expand at that point. So, I mean, to me, I would, I'd like to see it set back in, you know, to the north, just a little farther, and definitely to the east over, a little farther from the, the fence line, just to, so it's more usable, friendly, uh, environment for the people that are going to manage it.
So, it almost sounds like you're looking out for them, for their expansion, and for your benefit. Does, does that improve your, any, I think you expressed concerns previously about maybe smells and flies. Is it moving it another 50 feet, does that, does that do it for you, or Dennis, or?
Oh, sure. I mean, any feet back away from the fence line would be ideal. I can't, you know, I know I'm going to get some runoff of the water off the rope and stuff. I'm, I'm sure they're going to have their eyes dotted and their t's crossed to, uh, maintain all the manure out of the facility, and that it will be disposed of in a timely and orderly fashion, and that, uh, you know, I won't get any overspill or run from that, but, um... No, just a, a little more distance would be fine for all aspects, even the community. I mean, to put a, a building of that magnitude right next to the road, um... To me, it just, it just seems like it's, why are we so tight on land? They have a whole quarter section there. I mean, they certainly have room, and by moving it around, it certainly gives more access around the building, and easier to maintain the, the facilities and stuff too by having just more, more space around it, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kapperman? Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak to this item? One last time, go ahead.
Yep. I guess the biggest issue with moving to the east-
You need to get a remote switch or something.
Biggest issue with moving to the east, the restriction, um, I believe we showed on the grade plan as well as this draw to the east. Take a look at this property, this from the corner, there's a pretty significant drop off. The reasoning on the grade plan for the 200 by 650 area, which is bigger than the facilities, is to allow room to, we've been looking at facilities that feed on both ends, both sides of the building instead of just on one side. Um, and so, that building will be wider and shorter. Um, we're already looking at doing that to give us more room. Uh, moving farther to the east, if we went a full half mile to the east, or to the other side of the corner? Yep?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
I thought you- Moving all the way to the east, um, there, there is a nice location- Moving all the way to the east, there, there is a nice location to build that. There, we move inside three people setbacks to move out of one person setbacks. That's, that's the biggest issue we run into. Our neighbor would like us to move away from him and into everybody else's and, you know...
Feel a bit like a duck in a shooting gallery, maybe?
Yeah, you know, it's... And I understand that, you know, if she can convince her husband to build it someday, she would like to move into these, move over here. But they've lived there 28 years. I mean, you can see the trees have been protected. There's been no new trees planted. There, there's not running water out there anymore. I mean, there's just, it, it sounds like a great deal, but, you know, through the process of this and the dairy capo, there's been a lot of things that have come up that, you know, just came out of nowhere. If anything, that's, you know, and it's just another one. Nice idea that they might build a house out there, but they've not made an improvement in 28 years. The place is only, they, they tore out what's fallen down, but that's the only improvement made. So, you know, maybe they will build a house there, maybe they won't. I don't know. You know, depending on how our building goes, we can maybe be a little farther than 50 feet, but it's going to be how it fits in there, you know? We got that 200 by 650 area, that's what we're limited to. 65,000 square feet is more than what I need. The average animal, for an average animal, they were talking about, I believe, 43 inside. But once again, it was by the time we put in our feed alleys and everything else, we want to make sure we have enough room for this facility. Once again, there, there is no limitations on how many square feet for the facility, but and I want to use 65,000, so I was well over on the odor footprint tool, you know, because that's based on square foot, not on animal units.
Mr. Chair, I wonder where you're at with your work with the NRCS and your engineering firm?
That would be... This question, the NRCS. Where are you at with the NRCS?
At the engineering firm as far as, you know, he, he just alluded to the fact that you're working with them. I guess I'm just-
Brian Alberts, 26193, 467 Avenue. This is my unit. At NRCS, we're in the middle of a long process, is what, what it basically amounts to. We're still filling out paperwork, still doing everything else. It's, it is not a done deal that we're going to get the money to move. We're not the highest priority that they have, or we're not at the bottom of the list either. Depends on when they run out of money. The engineering firm, until we get approved, we don't need the engineering. That, we need that for the building permit. So that's where we're at with the engineering.
Thank you.
One other point that another neighbor brought up was, why don't we wait on this? Well, if we wait on this and the NRCS doesn't come through and all that, we're going to run cattle in our old facilities. That's not, it's not where I want to run cattle. It's mess, you know, it's right on the creek, bottom, everything else. That's why we should move forward with this because if we don't move forward with this, all the cattle are going to stay in the old facilities.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You're absolutely right. And, you know, our, I personally would really like to see you guys move ahead and become a more modern facility. But honestly, as I look at this, your i's are not dotted and your t's are not crossed. Some of your, you have questions without punctuations, like without a question mark. This 10,000 square foot thing could have been zero dollars to, I mean, the your penmanship, it's not right. Your, your grammar, it's, it's bad. And I can tell you that the county commission is not going to want to approve this unless we get it squared away a little better. And it would be better if it was typed. It would be better if the, if this one thing, I mean, couldn't we draw this part on the whole page instead of we do it like?
It has been drawn on the whole page too. We've, we've drew this out multiple times.
That's, that's a, a big issue for me is to figure out what this means. And I can't figure it out, really. And I probably could if, if we were to sit down for a long time. And, you know, as I, as I look, I don't see where we're even talking about trees anywhere here. But I, I know that I can understand your concerns about them, but is that one of the conditions?
No, it's not a condition.
Why are you spending all this time complaining about trees?
I asked.
Yes.
Well, I, I don't think we're ready yet. I, I think this still has too much, like you have the item, building height. Is there an ordinance limiting? There's no question mark at the end of that. Is that a question?
That wasn't even a, that's a piece of paper he added into this.
Okay, well, there's a 35-foot limit normally for buildings. Am I right, Scott?
Not for agriculture.
For agriculture, there is no.
Okay. Well, no question mark in the sentences. Is there an ordinance limiting?
And these are just points made for, for Kevin. Questions I asked Kevin. They weren't questions for this commission. And the sheet of paper he gave me, I assume is probably the same one you guys got. If you read through there, there was discussion about the fact that there is an exact building height on this facility yet because once again, a wider facility will be taller.
Well, I want you to get this thing. I want this to happen because I really would like to improve your current operation there. I think that having it, you know, slide down into the creek isn't our best plan. But I, I can tell you that the commission today, the county commission, is much more concerned about getting the t's crossed and the i's dotted. And, and this is still, it's not up to your previous application at this point. So we need to do better. It's difficult for me to support it at this time. If I do, you have to assure me that you're going to have a better presentation when it gets to the next level.
Any comments?
I think that's why I was wondering about where we're at kind of with the NRCS process. Because I think they can be incredibly helpful. They can provide a wide range of services and resources to help make sure that this is very, very clear. And I also want to see this approved. I think that where you're at is definitely not the best place. This is great. I mean, I think confinement buildings are good ways to manage manure and good way to feed cattle. I think in the long run, they're, they're wonderful. But we just, our job is, is permits. And we have to kind of make sure that things are all in order because we want you to be successful.
Any other questions or comments for the outlet?
And I'll kind of echo that too, you know. Great idea. We want to confine, control, or make the environment better, but we got too many question marks out there right now. And I'm sure it would be taken up to the county commissioners and they would be kind of on us and we want, we want things to go through when they go through. We don't want to get rejected, you know, get scolded by them.
It would take six months to come back, right?
Well, is there a way we can just, can we postpone? I mean, there-
You could continue it again. It's up to you.
I need to do that. I mean, we're getting into wintertime as we do that, but-
You, options, you have several options. I mean, you can continue it, you can approve it with the amending conditions, you can continue, you can deny it, make it come back in six months. That's, it's up to you. There's several options for you.
Thank you. You're welcome to sit down. I think I'll go to the commission for a second at this point. Doug, I hate to put you on the spot. You're the expert sitting up there. We all have some knowledge, probably a bit dangerous, so. So what do you think about the pest control plan?
Pest control plan, for the, you have an audience. I am a dairy farmer. We have a capo. You know, pests are not a big issue. You know, once a month, we do have a serbs come in and sprays for flies. We do not have flies. We have, have an open house every June and a number of people that comment saying, I cannot believe I'm eating breakfast out here in Arizona fly on farm. That might be exaggerated. There are a few flies. But nothing to make it, you know, your skin crawl because they're just all over everywhere. No, that's not, not an issue.
Monthly spraying, is that onerous from a cost standpoint?
It's voluntary. It's, it's we, we purchase the service.
Right.
You know, and it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, we just want to stay on top of it. We don't want to get a problem started.
Flies aren't good for the animals either.
Right, so... As far as pests that way. You know, rats, yeah, there's going to be a few rats. You'll never, never get rid of rats, but you can control them. You just got to stay on top of things. See, see an issue arising, get on top of it right away, you know? That's pretty much what I'll say about any pests or anything like that. Trees are very beneficial, you know? We kind of worried about, you know, a little bit of blockage because we're in a tight area. That has not been an issue at all. In fact, they help immensely. So, you know, if trees are something you have to do, do it with open arms. Don't be afraid of it. But work with the NRCS, you know, and then I would have no problem. Get them involved and let's get something more, or i's dotted and our t's crossed.
I'll have a question for you, Doug. Aren't there, you know, trade organizations that could help these folks get this proposal squared away? I mean, you know, the dairymen or the cattle associations, stock growers, Ag United, I mean, is there-
I'm sure they all have their avenues where they could direct you so we could make this, make your project here go through. But we just want, want everything to be very tight and orderly and neat. So we don't have a lot of questions out there. That's what I'm saying.
From my perspective, I'm supportive. I think it's an improvement, the capo, that what they're proposing is, is an improvement. So I would also like to see something done. I'm a little concerned. I, I'd like to be here at 99% to existing buildings, but you know, when you can do a little better with some trees, which have a lot of other benefits to our environment, I, I'd like to see those, but, you know, just throwing that out. And I don't know what you want to do today. Maybe you'll come back with that.
I think, you know, I hate to give you guys the runaround, but I think that we should defer action for another month. And I would really strongly encourage you to type this up somehow as opposed to write it up. Get, get, you know, get someone to help you drafting a better, a better look at the, the project and get some consultation from professionals in the, in the industry. I mean, they've got to be there to help you too. I mean, don't you think? I think we can get this done, but I think we need to take it a step better before we can get it past my brothers and sisters in the regular commission. So I move to defer for a month.
A second.
We got a motion and a second to defer. Any further conversation?
The exact date is August 24th.
August 24th.
For everyone in the audience knows, August 24th.
Guess if I would have any say, I would say two months. It'll take, it'll take time. It will take time because they, they're busy. I would just think two months would get, make sure everything's a little bit neater and-
I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Or maybe up to two months. I mean, up to their discretion, right? If they can get it done by the 24th of August, cool.
No, no, I, I, that doesn't work that way. We need to have it a date specific because then if they bring it back early, then, then public may-
Notification.
Yeah, they may not, no.
Okay, two months. Which makes it September.
I need to look at the dates.
And that, that will provide an opportunity to really have good discussions with NRCS about best, best options, best plans. I understand concerns about cattle comfort. And, and just, it will have provide good information about what the best thing is for, for you and for your neighbors too. I mean, we're trying to keep everybody in mind.
It wouldn't hurt to keep talking to the neighbors.
Two months is September 28th would be the net, would be the September meeting.
I could sell.
Friendly change of the motion in a second?
Yep.
All right. So we got a motion and a second to defer to September-
28th.
28th. All those payers say aye? Close, same sign, and the motion carries. Any old business chat?
The only old businesses are canceled or postponed events at Straw Bell Wine Raisings, the sixth, August, which is next Thursday. Just remind you.
Thank you.
It's at like 6:00 PM.
Six.
Nice facility. I was up there for the ripfest and I'm down there a long time.
I can't remember what you said, but I'm just letting everyone know. I'll send out a reminder.
Well, the first one I said no, but now I'm looking at it and I think I might have said no to this one and I think maybe it can be there.
I thought you said one, heels, but I thought you said one, heels.
Yeah, I think so.
So August 6th.
Yep. Who gets the deal with Carol at the Walleye Winery?
Me, but they painted the sign.
Okay, let's just go through the points, conditions of their deal. Number one, we don't have a half acre of fruit plant. If there is nothing-
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought you were talking about just the sign.
I'm talking about the sign. You can still see wine, as soon as the sun's around the west, it's coming south or east. You can still see it, it's just a joke.
Well, I can, I'll look at these conditions, the other conditions, but I'm-
He's admitting those.
He may not have, but he's satisfied my condition for, for painting over the sign.
Turned off.
Really? I'm glad someone brought the bright orange colors on it tonight. But, but anyway, the other thing though, that I think is important, and those wineries in the future-